I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees on August 6th to order, first order of business, budget allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and free.
Thank you very much. Consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approved minutes from previous meetings. Do we want to do these separately, or?
I would do them all at once unless there's any changes that any board member has. I didn't see any, so I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 3A, B, and C as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from citizens? Let's see, none? Rules of procedure.
So, this was something we discussed at our last meeting. You should have had a chance to look over the modified rules of procedure that Justin was willing to present to us. The way we handled it at the select board level was board decided whether or not we wanted to put these forward for adoption at our, at the September meeting. It does seem that these these procedures would be a benefit to this board as well. To kind of, as we said, the Robert Rules of Order is cumbersome at best. So having something that is modified and that streamlines the process and anything that generates conversation and encourages participation at these meetings I think is a positive.
I like that. Question is, if we did end up with a big meeting that was, that maybe was controversial, can you still use Robert's Rules of Orders? Like, you only get two minutes to speak, or?
I believe at that point you could, and I think you would say at this meeting, I make a motion, someone would make a motion to begin to adopt Robert's Rules of Order for that meeting. And you could do it that way.
So, the way the VLCT does it is they make it just comprehensive enough to satiate all the statutes. Time limits are on there, and it's up to the individual town whether or not they want to, what time limit they want to put in.
Yes.
And then they adopt those rules of procedure for meetings.
Yep.
It's less stringent, comprehensive in a legal setting, but less stringent rules to follow for general meetings.
I mean, it's probably good for the way I run the meeting.
I just think it's
I'm not real strict. I want people to talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think anything that encourages participation at any form of public meeting is a positive because I know it can be for anyone, a first time or twentieth time even. Public speaking is daunting.
And especially for, and sorry to interrupt Mr. McEnner, but especially for us as chair, vice chair, we need to understand, if we adopt Robert's Rules of Order, we have to understand certain nuances and certain types of procedural steps. Whereas these rules are a little bit more simplified, while still maintaining the kind of general outline of, you know, open meeting laws. Just a little less structured by, I suppose.
So what's the, you just need a?
I would, we need a motion to add that to an agenda item for the September 3rd meeting.
I'll make a motion to possibly adopt it at the September meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? Oh, you're all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Allocation and review and possibly approved, 31 Plumley Avenue.
31 Plumley Ave is a request for an additional two-bedroom to make a five-bedroom allocation. And that, the fee, allocation fees have been paid.
Now, when they do that, well, Mr. Chairman, when they do this, like allocation, this isn't, there aren't bedrooms in there right now. And I always wondered how that works because when I drove by on a site visit, there's, the last three times we did this, there's a for sale sign in front of the house. And I wonder if these come in when they're trying to sell and people realize that they don't have the allocations for the bedrooms.
A lot of times that, sometimes is the case.
If that's true, is it possible that we can ask that they also get a statement from the zoning administrator? Because there's no way that the zoning would know that there's those additional bedrooms added. Or do they know from us? Like, that would happen. Like, how would they know?
Well, we know that, so then, once, if they are added, this, this is also copied the planning and zoning, so it changes all the way around.
Thank you.
Do I have?
We're gonna do these
Individually.
individually?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the allocation at 31 Plumley Ave. Excuse me.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. There's also, sometimes houses will have a lot of allocation in itself.
Correct. And there are, you know, a lot of times, and this is why it's important that we keep up to date, you know, and why we have to be on top of like our COs too. Because a lot of times, Julie's point, this comes up at sale time, a lot of time.
You'd probably see it from the other end.
Yeah.
We do see that. It just seems like this is the third time I've, when we've gotten these, I drive by the properties and I see a big for sale sign, and it just makes me think.
Part of the reason, like, it can become an issue, for example, and it's not so much when it's pri, like, and it's not private, or if it's private, you know. If all of a sudden you're looking for an allocation and it doesn't meet what your septic is, then you have a problem.
Good point.
Yep, so.
Good point.
Okay. B, 81 Andover Street, would like to subdivide this property and build a new three-bedroom home.
So this is, yes, 81 Andover Street, Steve Myers, subdividing new home. Allocation fees and hook-on fees have been paid.
I make a motion to approve 81 Andover Street's request.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
61 Andover Street currently has a seven-bedroom allocation. Would like to relinquish one of those, making it six.
Do you have a letter from Patricia Archibald requesting that removal? They're aware that that is a permanent relinquish of that allocation. So if that were to ever change, they would have to come back and pay that.
Yeah, it looks like they, they did have Jarrett coming in.
Yes, yes, there's probably pictures, this one.
Yes.
That's proper. I'll make a motion to approve 61 Andover Street's allocation relinquish request.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
47 Andover Street requesting allocation for two two-bedroom units.
So you're getting some four bedrooms total, two two-bedroom units. Village allocation fees and hook-on fees have been approved and paid.
Make a motion to approve the allocation request for 47 Andover Street.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I guess we could have done.
I don't really understand this next one. It's a rare one.
It's the new house up on the top of Doug Road.
So they are, for whatever reasons.
I went up to see that one also.
They are putting in their own septic?
Yeah, that never happens.
They had dug their own septic before.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes it happens.
We saw it.
Why?
So Doug Road has been
When the sewer's right there.
dug up across the line, that's for water.
Water, yeah.
And that's gonna be paved pretty soon.
Crown point.
Great. I will make a motion to approve 81 High Street's relinquish request for their sewer.
You don't usually see that. Usually people want to get on the system.
Yeah.
I will second that motion, just making sure that we say that the water will be stored on the account. Is this on the paper?
All in favor?
Aye.
Department head reports. Everything looked good.
Yep.
Any discussion?
How has the, it says we treated 4.9 million gallons of wastewater this July? What was it last, wow, I guess?
Last July, it's got to be skewed.
Do we have numbers from July 2022 or anything?
I'm sure I could get them.
Just curious how, how traffic was up.
Yeah, I mean, it's skewed from last year, obviously. We had a lot more water than what's in there last year.
A lot more sewage, too?
Yeah, that's not necessarily how we treat this.
Oh, yeah, I don't have anything. No, we mentioned yesterday the bathroom situation.
Yeah.
The transfer station.
Age receivable reports.
So age receivable's still trending in the right direction. A lot of that is still due to current, what are current bills are still coming in. Anything that is in the 9120 category, I believe all of those accounts have payment plans, so, but we are, we've done a very good job over the last 12 months of staying on top of that communication, so.
Now, Mr. McEnner, I have a question for you. On page
You're gonna have to address with the water.
On page, read this one right here. Did we, didn't, well, didn't we, I know we're not the water official, but we do have jurisdiction of the sewer. Didn't we forgive?
A percentage of it, I think.
Up until, I think, a year, right?
Yeah.
So.
So I will check, and I'm not sure if that one's
I think that's probably supposed to be removed.
Okay, that's a good point. I will check that.
See which one I'm talking about, right here.
Because they requested an abatement on that.
I see it, I was like, oh.
Yeah.
Let me check on that.
Um, good job getting this
It's under control. It's under This, this is a lot better than the last ones.
That last one was 48 pages.
Well, that's because
It was first, it just got out. I could barely pick up the packet.
But it looks like our over 120s are
We're doing, we're, we're
Control has been, is this fairly common that people take a couple months to pay the bill?
Yeah. I mean, you have some folks, you know, it's been weird, it's too with, with taxes and it's a little, you know. Some people want to pay them immediately when they come out, that day, bang. And even this year, in terms of taxes, we, this, this, you know, the new tax bills came out, and the amount of people that came in and paid for the entire year was overwhelming.
Paid for the whole year, right?
Yeah, like, it was
Why would they do that?
It was a wild amount.
I do in Cavendish.
Yeah.
I have a camp down.
You pay it off, just build one.
Yeah, it's not that much.
So, but it's
I think it's a little long.
I could not pay my own.
So the
Mine's in my mortgage. I could not pay that one.
So it's, it's not uncommon that people will wait for the last, and with the water in sewer, it's a little bit unlike taxes, the penalty isn't, and interest isn't assessed. It's, it's lags, so.
Uh, question about that one. We know that that's gonna just keep swelling.
Yeah, there's not much we can do with water at this point. That'll be a lean on the property.
Municipal manager update?
Just a few, nothing crazy, crazy. But just to, you know, water, for wastewater, beginning tomorrow, we're gonna be repairing. We've had an ongoing leak issue on West Main over behind Benson's. There was a clean out there, and that is odd, it's part of the system, which is old. So we're gonna end up having to replace, and we're gonna put two structures, so two manholes in. That starts tomorrow.
Is that just, is that on West Hill, or?
West Main.
West Main, right near Charles.
So, yeah, behind, kind of behind Benson's and before, is that Pond Street Extension?
Oh, the old Benson's boss there, the white, oh, okay, got it, okay.
So, doing that, that'll start tomorrow. It'll probably take two or three days because it's just, this is kind of a, not how you like to go into projects, but how we have to do it. We prepped everything, and now we're gonna dig and find out what it actually looks like. Because we couldn't get the camera in far enough.
Yeah.
So, we'll begin that tomorrow. See, the Timber Inn is, demo's complete. I think it looks great down there. You know, that was, it's been a long time coming, but finally is, is done. I, to kind of, we talked about it a little bit. Unfortunately, we are beginning to have the conversations about the weather this weekend, which does not look all that fun. Kind of keeping eyes on that. We will open all the, they're gonna open all the dams tomorrow and drop those, leave them open tomorrow through Thursday to drain them for full capacity and probably close them Friday, Thursday morning, Thursday afternoon. Usually takes about two days for them to get down.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. I would, you know, recommend everyone who hasn't, you know, either PSA, we had the, you know, OnSolve Code Red, which is a town municipal alert system that's up on the website. There's a video on Okemo Valley TV. Go on, use it, sign up. You can get voice, email, text alerts.
So we can do all of that, yeah.
You can go on. So we had a little hiccup where for some reason you could register, but it wasn't allowing you back into the system to customize what you wanted to do. That has since been fixed. You can go in. It's very, very easy to just put, and when you sign up for your name, like, your address, make sure you put your whole address, even though it's Ludlow, so you're gonna put, you know, 37 Depot Street, Ludlow, Vermont, oh, five, put the whole thing. You can choose the medium that you want. And then, once the alert comes out, when you have yours, go into your phone or wherever and save it as Town Ludlow Alerts. It'll be, it'll be great because, you know, if that comes out, it's gonna be direct, something direct from myself, the Emergency Management Department. And it won't be things, you know, it'll be real-time information from us sitting at my desk, which will be
Excellent.
Definitely hope to not hear from you this weekend.
Yeah, and it does, so, and one thing, you know, it does, we did have it up. So you will, when you sign up, you will get an alert if there is a, like, a weather update. So we subscribe to that, so you'll get, it's like the state thing. So if there is a flash flood, you'll get a call if there's, and that's just for the area, so. That is good. We talked a little bit about ARPA funds. It's not on the agenda, but for next month meeting, we'll be able to allocate some of the ARPA funds. Village had $232,936.04. We had potentially allocated $125 to sidewalks, $10,000 to the auditorium project, $30,000 to Dorsey Park, and 35, we had thought, and then thinking that because we didn't get the paving grant for the access road, we were gonna be in and have to use about $60,000, which would have eaten up all of that. Got that quote today. It's actually only $35,000, which is nice. So that leaves us with, if we were to allocate those four items there, leaves us with $32,000, which we could figure out and
Yes, the Dorsey Park total allocation between the town and the village.
$95,000.
For, that's all on?
Yeah.
And that's $95,000. You said 25 from the village?
30. 65 from the town, 30 from the village.
And do we have any movement on that scope of work, that project? We had any movement?
A little. One of the projects was, you know, for the tennis court. Nick got a quote to resurface the tennis court, everything. It was, you know, one of those, if it's too good to be true, sometimes it is. I did a little more digging with Nick, and albeit it's still a good price, I don't know if it's the route we want to go. It was $20,000 to redo the whole court, but that was also not including overlaying again, so.
That's just, that's just recoding it, right? Crack filler, yeah.
It's usually gonna be like a $60,000 to $80,000.
Yeah, I even, I mean, sometimes you'll get six figures.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
But hey, we gotta, we gotta look at that kind of stuff. The playground is in desperate
So that's something. And we also, there is, we have a little more work to do at Dorsey Post Flood. It'll still be FEMA-related, but some of the drainage there is not ideal where it comes down on the side. We're working with Little Electric and maybe a private contract.
I noticed that the wind chutes are getting
And it's undermining the court, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the only other update, we have our first meeting tomorrow. The merger committee is meeting at 5 o'clock tomorrow. That'll be downstairs.
That is true. So we have, we're getting a lot of more green space, which, are there any plans or any movement, or maybe should we think about beautifying in certain ways?
You know, I think that's something that we can definitely look at. It's a conversation that we had a little bit too at last night, Tree Ward and stuff. That can play in there with Phil Carter, you know, plantings, things like that, if, if necessary. And I don't know, right place, obviously, and if it's a floodway, floods, we can't do that. But in some of these places that, maybe we can, you know, I think.
Actually, I think they do like
I think he kind of wants trees.
They want the trees in the flood zone to help.
You can do that.
Still good on that.
I think that he's awesome. I mean, I know we all know that, but there's a lot of grants. So that would all be free. There's a lot of money.
Yeah, sometime, having Phil time for that will be
We have a lot of green space coming up, which is great when you're in a green state, but we should definitely try to beautify it the best we can.
Yeah.
Other business?
Mr. McEnner.
Yes, go ahead.
I was having comments on that discussion about trees, planting, maybe Timber Inn. Kelly Stettner has joined this meeting. I think it's because she's been having conversations with Brendan about tree planting at the Timber Inn site. For those of you who don't know Kelly, Kelly runs the Blackriver Action Team, who does a lot of, did a lot of cleanup work after the flood. I don't know if you all heard of Blood Puppies, but that was her organization doing the flood cleanup. And she continues to work with the Lake Association. Her team also goes out and tests the water in all of the lakes for water quality every single week throughout the summer season. Just to give you a little more background, she also works for the Otaqueche Regional Conservancy. I think I might not have that name exactly right. She's laughing. But she, she has access to lots of grants. She was very interested in setting up like a tree farm at the Timber Inn site so that as we continue to plant floodplains, that we're not buying trees, that we would have an inventory of trees to facilitate that happening in our community as well as our surrounding communities. I mean, would you like to have her on the agenda at a future meeting to talk about this?
Oh, all I do is, so, yeah, I think that's great. The Timber Inn Tree Farm, got a name already built in.
It kind of does.
I think at the same time, we should invite the Tree Ward and, and what you
And connect it all together.
And also, yeah. And Bruce Schmitz also, with the assistant.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, to make sure they both are here, because they were to help together.
That'd be fantastic.
It'd be great to get almost a committee
Like, all three should be there. They should work together.
Yeah. Well, then, thank you.
Thank you for your info. Thanks for joining the call.
Oh, yeah, Eric does.
Go ahead, Eric.
Hey, thank you. It's not my fault. I should make it impressive. I don't know what else I could. Just wanted to, I remember a couple of projects. Just curious about, what is the Mill Street Bridge, should I ask? On target, that's in the middle of our, and the other one is Icefield. Does it matter? Any conversation about the future of that property?
Thank you, Mr. Olden.
Mill Street Bridge, yes, is on target for completion in October. And we've had, there hasn't been any public discussions about the school, Eric, but I think that that's something that we kind of had targeted for early fall as a pub, because again, their, their lease is up in the spring. It was a next one-year extension on that lease.
Yeah, we have a five-year plan.
Yeah, and then I think it was a, there was, COVID was a defunct year on that lease, so it was extensive. That is, is up. And the, I remember at one of our previous meetings, when we agreed to extend that for the next year, it was under the caveat that there would be public discussion over what the future of that building was gonna be.
Yeah.
They have a new headmaster, who I'm gonna meet with probably in the next two weeks. But again, that is on the top of my list for, you know, public discussion. Not saying that it's regarding the school going anywhere, but that's a, that is a hot topic of, for, for public discussion. So everything in there is very clear and transparent as to what the plan is for the school and what the plan is for the town.
The school is an asset building of the town. The expeditionary school is a ten, and I don't think they use anyone in your half of that building. So there are some creative answers, hopefully the public
Absolutely.
bear that out.
Can I answer your questions, Eric?
Yeah, I think I, I think you should have a buddy of ours, this, by the time, you know, just started, biggest discussion, just on the big of other, you know, so maybe skip that. Budget time is just a long-range capital plan for people, town facilities, town assets. Absolutely, you know, a lot of things, just think it's important to do to sort of plan for these items, not just be reactionary, you know, one year, two year, but sort of a long-range window. Because the, yeah, so starting at the, any other, discussing work here, is, you know, the vision, making it, but, but maybe this is, is a long-range plan.
I guess we should have defer building investments, capital fund or something.
We should, and, you know, Eric's correct. You know, I've been working on putting together with our department heads, you know, not even just the building, but equipment capital, you know, just because, you know, assets, we've learned in the last two weeks, you know, some, when you're looking at some of these large purchases, if you're not planning for them, not only are they expensive, but you're looking at, you know, a million dollars, so obviously, you know, possibly for a fire truck, a million dollars plus, which is three to four years out. That's something you have to plan on because essentially, you're also, you're buying, at some point, you're essentially buying a truck, and you're still paying for an old, wow, one's being built. So having this plan in place, and, you know, as, to use Eric's term, not being reactionary, but planning that out and knowing what you're gonna do three and five and eight and 10 years down the road, is just fiscally responsible.
Good points. Thank you, Mr. Olden. Good points, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Set date for the next meeting, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, is that right?
Why'd you guys?
Thought we were talking the third.
Why not the third?
Yeah, if it is the third, I don't know, it's just the tenth. Septemberth, I'm missing something, but the water commissioners is the third, select board, we decided that it was gonna be the second. Um.
I think we should do the third.
Yeah. I'll blame you guys, that's my wife's birthday.
Sorry.
That's why it's a tough.
Maybe, uh, Mr. McIner can call off.
I don't, I don't stay five.
Could somebody make a motion to change it to the ten, to the third?
I'll make a motion to set the date for the next trustees meeting as September third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've signed warrant orders. You got them, right?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Um, possible executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you for coming.